I didn't bring paper, all right now.
Good evening, everybody. We'll start the council meeting, city council meeting for today, November 24th, 2025. And I'll ask Madam Clerk to give us a roll call. Oh, gosh. I looked at the call, the order. I called the order. Let's have a, let's have a pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Counselor Felch to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Please.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Susie?
Here.
Counselor Hoffman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Bogart?
Here.
Counselor Felch?
Here.
Mayor St. Clair?
Here. Tonight, and the staff in attendance, we have, excuse me, the City Manager Kirk Biati and Glenn Smith, Finance Director, and Katie Garno is our, I messed it up again. Katie Gargano, Gargano. It's a medical problem, and someday with luck, I'm not sure. I keep fine tuning the medicine, and it just doesn't seem to work. Our great Madam Clerk. I have two more shots at that, Katie, and then afterwards. And also in attendance, we have Counselor Elect, City Council Elect John Hildreth, and back there somewhere is Counselor Elect Mike Condon. Thank you both. Okay, now, why I've got her attention way in the back, I'd like to call Sammy O'Connor up. I have a, I have a check for her. Yeah, you don't know about this, huh? This didn't pass through.
That's right.
This is a check for $5,000 from the City Council in the city for Santa Village.
Christmas Village.
Christmas Village.
Is that Madison?
Santa will be at Christmas Village, so some halfway. So there you go. Thank you. And a thank you note for the city. Very nice. I'll pass this around to everybody. And look forward to that opens when?
December 3rd.
The 4th.
4th.
December 4th. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you.
And I see that Mayor-Elect Boards has just joined us out there, too. Okay. So I'll look for a acceptance of the minutes from the previous meetings, meeting.
So moved.
So moved, seconded by Steve Bogart. All in favor? No problems? Six zip.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one consent and action items, temporary, 8A, temporary traffic order 2025-21, the Santa Shuffle 5K Race. Anybody like to speak on that?
Go ahead, if you want to.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an event for the Children's Auction. They do it every year. It's a great event. Anybody that's interested in walking or running, be glad to have you aboard, and donate to the Children's Auction.
I wish I could do that. I could try. Okay. Okay, any other discussion? No? Okay, I'll move to approve the temporary traffic order 2025-21 for the Santa Shuffle 5K Race to be held on November 29th, 25, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Okay. Made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. All in favor? Six zip. Thank you. Now we go to number nine, citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. If you'd like to comment on a matter not on tonight's agenda, please feel free.
Hello, I'm Diane B. Lockwood, and I live on Stratford Street in Ward 2. And these were just some concerns. I don't require any reply tonight or any definite action. Safety, bicycles on sidewalks, motorized scooters on sidewalks, e-bikes. I think we need a refresher course. Our public service announcements need to happen on bicycle etiquette or the rules of the road. I've had numerous close calls with bicycle, e-bike, e-bike or scooter riders, and they're not just unhoused people. These are regular, good old boys and girls, you know, from teenagers to adults. And I don't want to sound like a anti-cyclist or cyclist hater. I used to ride my bike. When I lived on Pleasant Street, I'd ride it down Lake Shore Road to Medsource Technologies, and my husband would ride along with me for the fun of it because he was retired. But anyway, I'm just, and I think our society would be improved if more people biked instead of driving cars. I'm more than happy to share the road with cyclists, giving them a wide berth and driving with patience. I'm just fearful of having to be vigilant for watching for them on sidewalks, which I believe the last time I checked was reserved for pedestrians. And, and also, just aside, note the story on WBC out of Austin tonight. There was a young teenager killed because he ran his bike, an e-bike, into the side of a truck. And sometimes the bicyclist are hit because it's maybe the driver's fault. But there's something with e-bikes. I think they're looking at how to classify them, you know. And also, number two, I want a noise ordinance in Laconia for loud vehicles. At first, I thought it was just me. I do live on a busy intersection, but then I heard from others, young and old alike, with the same complaints. And I mentioned my concerns to one of, to the, oh, the meeting of the police commissioners. And, and Chief Canfield gave me brief history why Laconia didn't or couldn't have one, but I heard a rumor that Manchester has a vehicle now noise ordinance. And so maybe the powers can, that be, can consult with them or get some ideas, or maybe you already have some ideas. But that's my concern. That's all I want to say tonight. Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to both of those, if I may.
Yes.
With regards to the bicycles, that's a problem that we all, believe me, if you use the sidewalk. So you come out of a business store, and it's by the grace of God, you're not run over by somebody. It just happens to beat you to the punch. And I know there's a bill that's being filed down in Concord to reclassify some of these bicycles, especially the ones that do 40, 50 miles an hour, and you'll come up, you'll come up alongside them or they'll pass you in traffic with no headlights or no cause for concern of anything. But that is something, I know that when the police are walking to beat downtown, they, they speak to people like that, although that problem does seem to disappear when they're standing there, too.
Yeah, sometimes I thought, I noticed maybe some improvement, but.
And as far as the loud noise, you know, as a motorcyclist, that's always been the bane of my existence, was when people, I have a theory why people do that, not only with motorcycles, but with cars. A lot of them, I think, just have, well, I won't go there, but they just have problems, let's say. So they like to call attention to themselves or look at me or whatever it is. So it is a problem, and I, and I'm pretty sure there is, there is a ordinance, I believe, a sound ordinance. Nor, excuse me.
We've had the discussion about vehicles, but there's never been anything walked in on, on vehicles.
Yeah.
But we do have a standard noise.
It's very hard, it's very hard. They may have that down in Manchester, but I'd love to see the conviction rate on it. It's a very hard thing to set up, test, and improve, although sometimes it's so loud because you're on Main Street, and there's two or three cars. They come by pretty much daily, and I, they love it because it echoes off the buildings. So it's, it's, it's obnoxious, for sure. So a lot of people feel your pain, and I'm sure that the police will do whatever they can.
And I'm kind of used to the motorcycles. They're, they don't seem to be the problem. It's those motorcycle, those machine gun Kelly cars.
Yeah.
You know, whoever.
And we had a bill in Concord on that, too, and I think it went away for some unknown reason.
Because we live free and die in New Hampshire. Maybe of deafness.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody else with any commentary of matters not on the agenda? Did I see somebody want to come up? No? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to, no interviews tonight, no nominations, communications, probably it. We'll go right down to the mayor's report. Jeez, I get to talk again. There was a letter in the paper, I don't remember who wrote it, but I was a little confused. There were, I believe it was a lady. She was complaining about that people couldn't see the Laconia, the city budget. And Kirk or, the clerk can confirm this, but if somebody wants to see the city budget, they can simply go to the library. I think there's a hard copy over there, Glenn?
Yeah.
There is? Okay.
Library, City Hall, and online.
And it's online?
Yep.
And if, and if somebody has, this is beautiful transparency, if somebody wants to come in and, and speak to the City Manager, if he's free, then they can, or make an appointment, and if they have questions about the budget, it's right there.
Yep, certainly come. I mean, certainly, if you want to come see me, that'd be great. The, the copy of it is at, in the clerk's office. If they just wanted a copy, they can make a copy for a small fee per pages. But yeah, obviously, anytime somebody wants to have a, if they want to have a meeting to talk about it, I'd be more than happy to.
And the other comment from the same letter writer was, why are we paving city streets or state streets or state roads? And they referred to South Main Street. And the reality is, is South Main Street is a city street. It's labeled by the state as State Route 106, but that's in the urban compact. And just like US 3 that goes along Weers Boulevard, that's in the urban compact. We're responsible for the road. We pave it, we plow it, we maintain it. And so there's no secret there. And again, if you have any confusion at all about any of this stuff, please reach out to City Hall. They can help you with that. Or you can ask me why, whether I'm in office or not. I, most of us know the answers to that stuff. It's no big secret. I want to remind everybody that the Christmas parade is on the 29th. Actually, that's next Saturday, this coming Saturday. And that starts at 5:00, and it begins by Parks and Rec, the building there. Is that where it begins, or somewhere up here?
I'm not sure where they're starting it this year, but they also have an event going on most of the day with food trucks and activities downtown.
Yeah, downtown has a lot going on. Canal Street has food trucks. There's something going on here at City Hall in the, in the Bellknap Mill side that they're doing, plus the parade. So there's a lot going on.
Okay. And Christmas Village, again, will be starting on December 4th. That, that's a lot of, a lot of fun for everybody there. So that's pretty much all I have on my comments. Tonight, we'll move along now, council comments. Anybody in the council? Counselor Hoffman?
Yeah, I have a few things. Just want to point out, we still haven't had a Public Works Committee meeting about the situation on Shore Drive, Holman Street, Lynnwood. We still haven't resolved the issue with the end of Pleasant Street either. And then I wanted to talk about the, the homeless forum we had 12 days ago. It was well attended and, and interesting. I think there's, there's probably a broader conversation about the, the role of local government in this issue. And, you know, we've all heard it 100 times. This is a multi-pronged problem that needs a multi-pronged solution and all that. But what struck me, listening to, to people talk at the forum, was that I think there are some things that, that are our responsibility to, to handle. I think we need to at least address this from a public health perspective. I think it's clear that, that we need more, more places for people to drop off trash. We need some kind of citywide needle disposal program. I think it is incumbent on us to try to get these things off of the street and where they belong. And if there's a problem with people defecating in front of businesses downtown, I think that's our problem, too. I think then it's, we're obligated to maybe provide someplace where people can go to the bathroom. I mean, this isn't a solution to the whole problem, but I think there are things that it is clearly our responsibility to start to address, not for the residences, for the businesses. I'd like to see us do something about these things.
Are you recommending that goes to a committee of some sort on?
I guess that's what we do here, sure.
On what, on what, on which things? You've mentioned several. I guess probably one of the most important ones might be places to go to the bathroom.
I think it's pretty important. I think, I think these are all, all three of these things are important. I guess to elaborate, if, if it's going to cost us tens of thousands of dollars to clean up, you know, an encampment, and if we're just going to keep moving them around, then would it not be more responsible to give them some place to throw their trash away in the first place? It would probably be cheaper than cleaning it up after the fact. I don't know what committee deals with that, but.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're pressed on one, I would say usually the government operation ordinances for the ordinance side, but this is government operations. So I would think that it's going to end up in that direction if you wanted it to go somewhere.
We used to have the.
Yeah, either that or Public Works, because you also got the streets that you mentioned. That would be Public Works.
Yeah, and we can always bring them into the mix if, if we need, if, if that was what was requested.
What is the favor or pleasure?
I talk to you guys.
Well, Eric, I believe you are on the Public Works.
I prefer Public Works because I'm on that committee.
Right.
And that's fine. I mean, that, that, that's fine, too.
It's fine.
Yeah, and if it needs to go to Government Ops after that, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Cheney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, the fire chief will be up here shortly, and I have several things that he will address that I want to have an opportunity to speak to at that time. The three things I'd ask the City Manager to look into is, I watched, I, I watched a near accident in front of Elm Street School with all the cars parked there waiting to go in. One person had set out just a little bit. Another car refused to give way, so he kept coming. He clipped the mayor, the mirror. He missed the car going the other direction by inches at best. So I'd asked the, the manager if he'd talked to the schools again and asked that they come back to the council with a proposal sooner rather than later before somebody gets hurt out there.
Do they have a detail up there? It seems to be such, I've heard this before.
They've gone up, they've put signs up. I've talked to the chief about it. They have done it. It goes away. And then the minute they arrive and see there's no cruisers sitting there, it, it's, it balloons up again.
And wasn't there something done with the parking lot there to, to accommodate this, or?
There was. They tried a little, but it's not enough. I mean, the, the length of the line was from the driveway all the way to the other end of the school property. And sooner or later, someone's going to get hurt seriously there. Beyond that, it's a traffic hazard, just vehicles having problems. So.
Why don't we pull the ticket book out and issue a couple of $300?
Steve, can you, can you speak, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Why don't we pull the ticket book out and issue some $300 tickets for, for creating a traffic hazard, and, and maybe that will encourage someone from wanting to park in the road?
Well, we're going to have to put them in the bushes to do it, because when they're there, nothing is, nothing goes on. The minute the officers leave, then the line starts. I, I hear what you're saying, and I'll talk to the chief tomorrow about that idea, but.
Because you know what's going to happen. As soon as someone gets hurt, it's going to be our fault.
Yeah. Well, that's why I bring it up now, so that we can work on it. I think we need to get the school department to, to fix the idea we had about coming in from the back. Bon Peach Road.
That came up during the Capitol.
Counselor Hoffman?
Thank you. That came up during the Capitol Improvement Committee meetings, right? That several departments wanted funding for that issue, and there was a plan. What's the timeline on, on actually picking a plan and implementing that?
And that's why I asked for a report. I'm asking that the manager let us know. I hope he can talk to the schools as well as our committees and whatever. They do have funds, so maybe we ought to ask them to help out. Anyway, so the Elm Street School. The second item, Mr. Mayor, is the Elm Street Bridge. Looks great. But the new curbing on, if you're going towards the fire station from my house, the curbing on the right is maybe three inches high. A bicycle could go over it and, and not crash. And perhaps the city engineer can let us know what we can do to make that better. I'm just worried something's going to happen.
Are you worried about a car going over it?
A car, anything. I mean.
How high is it on the other side?
About so high.
Well, that's not going to stop a car either. If somebody veers into it. I, I understand what you're saying, but.
The average person veers into the six inch high or eight inch high curbing and feels it and goes back. They're not going to feel this. It'll feel like a pothole.
I spoke with Alan Beadle about that this morning. He's going to talk to the engineer and see what's going on, because they also have another coat of pavement to put on there, I believe. So.
Another coat of pavement.
There won't be any curbing. So.
So Counselor Felch, are you saying that Alan Beadle's concerned about the side on the Wild Trail?
On the Wild Trail, Wild Trail side.
That's, that's where the problem is.
Oh, that's where it's only three inches, not the other side. Okay. I thought it was the other side. Thank you.
Yeah, with bicycles and stuff, it's just very dangerous. Something needs to be done.
So I would ask that the manager and the city engineer let us know at the next meeting what, what we can do to fix that problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get right out there. Take a look.
All right, thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor, and I've already warned him I'm bringing this up, but I will hound my replacement about Roller Coaster Road and, and Parade Road. Last May, we were told we were going in there to clean it out. Apparently, something went wrong. Apparently, we're going back to court. Apparently, apparently, apparently. But all that crap is still there. So I would ask that the manager advise us next meeting where we're at and, and how, how can we get this finished?
I thought you were talking about the intersection for a second.
That, too.
Well, that's a state matter. That's.
Mr. Mayor, I'll get the exact dates of when they're going to be out. So there was an order to have that cleaned up, and the company was refused allowance onto the property. So we had to go back to court. And now to get in a contempt to, to have it forced through on there, that has just gone through. I'll get the exact date of when they're going to be back out. It'll have to be with law enforcement, all that. So it's being dealt with through the court. I'll, but I will get the exact date of when they're, when they're heading back out there.
The other issue is, the Supreme Court gave them a timeline, and that's got to be two years ago.
Yeah, and that's all under a timeline fine system, so there's.
They're supposed to be fined daily for not allowing us to clean the place up. And I would encourage the council, keep an eye on, you know, that we don't dismiss the penalty in order to get on the property. I think we need to get them to pay at least some form or some portion of the court-ordered fine. I mean, it's been at least two years since the New Hampshire Supreme Court ordered him to let us clean the place up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Susie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item I'm bringing up is for the council's here ears, and also for anybody here that's on a county delegation. Counselor Bogart, yourselves, and I see incoming mayor is here also. If you, if, some of you probably have seen in the Laconia sun over the last couple of weeks, there's been an ad place for a county delegation meeting on the equipment budget for the coming year. And I see a 7.9% inter, 7.9% increase in the budget. That's, that could be and end up a real devastating to the city of Laconia. As you know, we're the, we bear most of the county's expenses along with all their nonprofit properties. So I hope that the delegation looks at that. I'm going to try and put some work together as Chairman of the Finance Committee and build a model of what that 7.9% increase from this county would mean to us. As you know, last year, after we took care of our obligations with the state, schools, and the county, we only had $1.9 million left in our budget to be able to do anything with. And everybody's screaming for roads, for this, for that, and everything else like that. We don't have the money. And the delegation goes ahead and is going to move ahead on a budget probably within the next two to three months, Steve. Would that, would that be true? Okay? And very seldom, is there anybody really raise a hand there? I'd be at the next, I'd be, excuse me. I'd be at that next meeting on the second, okay? But I'm going to, I'm, I'm not able to attend for other reasons. But I, I don't want the county to situate. I realize you guys work hard on your budget. You've got to realize, too, the city of Laconia can only bear so much.
If I'm, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bogart?
What happens on Tuesday is the county commissioners present to the delegation the budget. And the county commissioners are wishfully thinking and asking for 7 point whatever percent. After it's presented to the county commission, there's a six-meeting setup with a budget committee. And the budget committee then, at that point in time, goes through line by line, every line, and, and the mayor can, can confirm this. We have each department head come up, and they justify each line in the budget to us. And then there's cuts made and stuff like that. So the actual 7.9% that the county commissioners request usually doesn't end up at that number. It's much less. So.
Okay, thank, thank you, Steve. And I'd like to know the dates of those budget meetings, because one of the concerns that I have is that the city of Laconia has pretty much all the non, the properties of the Bellknap County, which don't pay taxes. And let me finish, please, okay? So the citizens of the city of Laconia are bearing upon them the tax burdens of having all those properties here, okay? And we provide all the services. And then at the same time, we bear the highest ratio when it comes to the city taxes, the county taxes. And if you look at the. And if you look at the, and I know we all did, we looked at the charts that Councilor Cheney had put up over the last few years, that has gone significantly higher. And the city of Laconia cannot continue to operate when we only have one point nine million dollars left in our budget to be able to do some work in the city. We got a thirty-four million dollar road improvement program sitting on our lakes. We've got a new public works situation going on, plus the everyday way of doing business. I don't, I'm not complaining that you're not doing it properly. I just wanna make sure that you're taking into consideration the position you put in the city in.
Well, I think, hold on one sec. I think you can count on being told when these budget meetings are. They're made publicly, and I will...
And they're on YouTube.
Well, yeah, but it's always good, if somebody can be there in purpose, in person, that's always good. Anything else?
And if I may respond, the county taxes are paid. The only effect that it should have to the city of Laconia is because it's a separate line item on the tax bill. So they collect the tax rate. Last year, it was like ninety-four cents per thousand. So that bill comes, it's issued out through the tax bill, okay? When it's paid, it's paid in two lump sums to the city. The city gets to keep a lot of that for six months, and they can collect the interest off of that for six months. At the end of the year, the county submits a bill for the exact amount that the tax bill says, okay? And then the city then writes a check for that amount. It's not a penny more, it's not a penny less, as far as I know. That is there as a pass-through. All you're doing is, the city is not having to fork up any other money whatsoever other than what was collected on behalf of the county. That's it.
If I may?
So, wait, wait, so...
The interest is not...
Hold on a second.
The interest is not, the interest, the city keeps the interest?
That's correct. And I'll give you one more point, and I'll make this my last comment, okay? That, those taxes collected by the city of Laconia for the county budget is also part of the equation used for setting a tax cap. And we're sitting under a tax cap that puts handcuffs on our wrists.
I would suggest that you revisit the tax, I have, and I have...
Yeah, please, go ahead. Okay, yeah, let's, I think the point's been made by both councillors, so. Councilor Felch, you have some other comments?
Yeah, I'm gonna circle back to good stuff.
Okay, thank you.
So, in reference to the parade and all the activities downtown, also the trees that they're setting up down here at the park, anybody who wants any information on any of that stuff, it's put on by Celebrate Laconia. They have a website, they have a Facebook page, so that's a place to find that out. I also wanna do a shout-out to the Elks Club, Shannon and everybody that, they had the Elks Mania this Saturday. They do that for the children's auction. I'm not sure of the exact figure, but I'm pretty sure they raised over twenty thousand dollars for the children's auction. And of course, the children's auction's coming up quick. Any information you need on that, childrensauction.org.
Does Celebrate Laconia have a phone number for those people that would like to call because they don't have all the other stuff?
I don't know, you'd have to look on the website or on the Facebook page.
Of course.
I'm not part of it, I'm just letting people know.
All right, well, maybe somebody can get word to them, or if they're watching, they can reach out. Thank you. Anybody else on the council, council comments? Okay, we'll now go into committee reports. Does anybody have a committee? Councilor Haynes?
Mr. Mayor, Government Operations met on Tuesday, the eighteenth. Item one was the Human Relations Committee. We looked at the vision statement and the mission. We also looked at the policies and procedures. We had public testimony in favor of making it a permanent committee. We had no one speak against it at that committee meeting. It was the unanimous decision by the committee to send it to the council for consideration. And he also asked the city manager to look at it and send it to legal counsel.
Okay, thank you, anything else?
So that was the extent of that. As far as kratom is concerned, after a lengthy discussion on committee meeting, we discovered that there's no regulation about this particular substance, period, whether it's statewide, federal-wide, FDA. Again, we had public testimony of actual people that came before the committee to speak. We, to speak about its medicinal purposes for them personally. We also had six or seven people that took it upon themselves to submit in writing to the committee. We did have the city manager brought to our attention that there was a mother that was very concerned about her son that is addicted to it. But at the point that there is no standing as far as regulating is concerned statewide or any other way, we found no reason that we wanted to even consider banning it. So that was the committee's finding that we would not recommend it to the council for any action, period. The third thing was social district. We had a great discussion about that, and we looked at the RSA, discovering there's a lot more to it than people would think as far as the regulations and the works. We did have testimony from the Public Works Director in regarding that, about traffic and that, and how that would pertain to it. City manager offered to look at a social district for downtown, a hypothetical thing. And the committee agreed to look at what the city manager would propose to us, so we decided to keep it in committee.
Good idea.
So that is the report of government operations.
Getting back to your second topic here, there is one regulation, you have to be twenty-one years old to purchase that.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
We were told eighteen.
Okay, I was told, I checked with a couple of local businesses that sell it, and they told me it was twenty-one, where they enforce twenty-one, so...
That's fine, yeah.
You know, I didn't wanna get into a big discussion about this, but there was a discussion about synthetics and where it should be sold and where it shouldn't be sold. I guess you can buy it at a gas station or whatever. But I think as we move forward, I think there's gonna be regulations as where it can be sold, how it can be dispensed, that type of stuff.
That would probably come from the state.
Yeah, that's what we thought.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the council have any committee reports?
If I can just add to that, if you go back and look at the Sunday Morning Interview Program, I forget the name of it, but they had a doctor from Dartmouth, a research scientist doctor, who talked about that stuff. And I, listening to him, I would suggest to you that the state probably will come up with some sort of rules, 'cause he goes on at length about additions to it, and it's not actually grown in the Orient. It's grown here and synthetically enhanced, and he went on and on and on. You can watch it on YouTube, but he...
I think Councilor Cheney gets a close-up. Does that come on Sunday morning?
It is, yes, thank you.
So, I'd say, well, most of the people that spoke about it said that the leaf itself is what they're mostly looking at for medicinal purposes. It's helped them a lot, but they do have a synthetic formula, and it can be increased by so much. That's where the problems at.
Okay, any liaison reports tonight? No, okay. So now we're on number nineteen, that citizens request to comment on the current agenda items. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on current agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Normally, I would have the economic update at this meeting. We get all of that data from the federal government. With the shutdown, we weren't able to get that. So my hope is to either have it at the next meeting, which isn't the normal one, or at the, I'll do two months at, when we get to this point, next month. But you do have your Laconia projects update, and I'll say that there's not a whole lot of changes this month. There's a few updates. You know, coming into this time of year, most things starting to wind down. We do have the work up on the Old North Main Street section has been completed for the season. They'll be back next spring to put the final top coat on for the pavement. Mill Street, the pedestrian bridge over here, is continuing to go through its engineering studies. Remember, that was a grant-funded project that they're working through, or congressional direct spending money that they're working on. So that's moving through its stuff. Hilliard Road, a little bit delayed, but it's still, it's still moving forward as we expect. That's to replace the culvert out towards the end of Hilliard Road. Just one of the Saki River Basin project, that letter was sent that you guys approved me sending to, to the Wood of Saki River Basin, I mean, to the New Hampshire DES, as well as there's an LSR in from councillor and representative Bogart. And I believe it may have been cosponsored, I don't wanna say it, but I believe it's been cosponsored, to try to change the way the funding formula is done for the Wood of Saki River Basin, which is gonna be good for all of the ten communities. Still touching up some final Weers rebuilding project, bumpers and some NADA hoists, things like that. So they're working on that as we come into fall and winter. And lastly, I'll just mention on the state school update, I've been asked a couple of times about the traffic study. As I said, there was a very large traffic study that was done, that was requested. We did hire our normal third-party traffic specialist that we generally do most of our third-party work with. He has just about done his review. Basically, he took their report and said, does this look right for what we're trying to look at? And is there any questions that don't seem to be answered that we would want answered out of that? I say, I keep saying a thousand, it's almost fifteen-hundred-page report. So, you know, having him do that has been really important. Met with him today, just kinda finalized, you know, did we have any other questions? And so we should be getting that back from him. I won't put a timetable on it, but it shouldn't be long. I would think, you know, less than a month, I would guess, we would have something from him on that. So that's really the only state school update I have. Other than that, everything else is really kind of unchanged, but it's in the packet if you have any questions.
One question I have is with regards to Elm Street, what Councilor Cheney brought up. Is that something that, how are they gonna deal with that?
Well, I'll, I mean, he's here, so I don't have to send him anything. He'll go over and take a look at it tomorrow, we'll get an answer on why it's the way it is, and then we'll, you know, be able to address it as appropriate.
Okay, and the bridge, the railroad bridge up there in Weers Beach, I saw that was on here.
It's been on there for a long time, that's still, we're still a ways away from that being anything. The last thing that we had was, they had a public, not a public hearing, but a charrette for it, so the public could come out and talk about it. That was six, eight months ago now, if not longer, maybe even longer, a year ago. I mean, it's been a while. That's a state project, so we haven't heard much more update on that.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Bogart?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's gonna be a point in time where with this Wood of Saki River Basin bill, that as soon as we figure out what committee it's gonna go to, it would be advisable if the council in a joint agreement would have a letter written and submitted to the committee in support of this. It would show that the city itself supports the passage of the bill. And as soon as I can find out what committee it comes to, I'll relay that over to the city manager. And that way, we could all, boom, you know, supply support for it to the committee, showing that the city's on board.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, you can wait if you wanted to, or you could just, if you wanted to vote to say, you know, as soon as it comes up. I've already written a letter that you guys approved to go down there, so it's not gonna be much different. So if you guys want to do that, that way I know, you know, I can just go ahead and move forward, and that's up to you guys.
You recommend we do that now, or?
You can do it now, where I can bring you the letter first, and it's gonna be basically the same letter, but I can bring the letter first to you, it's, we could do it either way. It's up to you guys.
Councilor Bogart, I'll look to you for that since it's your bill.
The only thing I'm waiting for, I would support whether we, you know, vote now or later, and it's just based on what committee it's going to, so we could direct a letter to that committee in support.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Susie?
You see, you don't know what committee it's going to in the state legislature, right?
That's correct.
Okay, the other thing in there, I see in the morning, that they are asking for a ninety-four million dollar bond over the next ten years. And it looks like, it seems to me like that's the wish list of the sewer operation, okay? And that was kinda put aside until you guys are, you know, not feeling correctly, and go back and come back with something different?
That we're not sure of. I have not seen that ninety-four million. That would, that bond would come before, I do believe, the Public Works Committee if it was to be done. I'm not sure where this bill pertains with it. Maybe Wes can update us on that question. I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay, I'm just, to me, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm looking at my sewer bill already, and it's kinda scary.
We gotta push our delegation to help us with that.
Okay, well, thank you both, that's it. All right, we'll go on to new business now?
Were we gonna vote on that, or?
Oh, I thought we were gonna, that's up to you.
If somebody wants to make a motion, says when it's set, then I can...
Okay, that motion, you wanna read your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that as a council, we agree to allow the city manager to write the letter to the committee once we figure out what committee it is, that we support the bill that will reduce our depend, the...
Reduces the rate?
The rate, from five percent to two percent.
I'll second that.
Which is gonna be a lot of money savings for each of these communities.
Okay, that's been seconded by Councilor Susie. Any other commentary? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hands, it's six to nothing, thank you, all.
Soon as I find that, I'll send it to you.
Absolutely, we can get drafted ahead of time.
All right, now we'll go to new business in twenty-one A. This is assignment and assumption of lease agreement for fifteen Aviation Drive in Guilford. Look to the city, oh, we get someone's gonna come up.
Marv, he comes up and does this one?
Okay, wonderful.
Yep, this is just another transaction, one hangar owner. My name is Marv Iverson. I'm the airport manager at the Laconia Municipal Airport. And this is a transaction that I've come before the board frequently with. This is an assignment and assumption of lease. A hangar owner is selling to another party, and the party, the buyer does not desire a new lease. They want to assume the existing lease. So the, it requires the seller to assign the lease to the buyer. It's an assignment and assumption of lease. I am here to look for authorization from the city council to authorize the city manager to sign this assignment and assumption of lease on behalf of the city of Laconia. It was authorized for signature from the vice chair of the Laconia Airport Authority on the November twentieth last week, and the airport authority provided that authorization. Now it's in the hands of the city to authorize the city manager to sign.
The council associate a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marv, how long has that lease been in effect already?
Ballpark.
It was in, I know when the initial lease, it was two thousand and three, and it's a forty-year lease.
For a forty-year lease, so...
So it's about halfway through.
Right, but that, the rate of the lease at that time?
Increases every year according to the December CPI.
Okay, so it has increased?
Yes.
Okay, would the lease, if I may?
Go ahead.
The lease value that, the lease value that you're gonna put it through now, okay? Would that be the same value if somebody wanted to put a new hangar up with some... Would that be the same value if somebody wanted to put a new hangar up with something else, take that lease?
Yes, pretty, pretty much the same. We've, we've worked to try to level the playing field as much as we can for all of the hangar owners, so that no one is paying more or less notably than others.
And the lease that the, the new lease or wants to take will just continue on till the end of the 40, the original 40 years, not?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Marv. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Kirk?
No, I'm good, very standard transaction we do.
Okay, I'll make the motion, if there's no more questions from anybody. I move to approve Kurt Biati as Laconia City Manager to sign the lease agreement as presented.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Felch, seconded by councillor Haynes. Any more questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's six votes in the affirmative, thank you. And again, thank you, Marv, he's gone, so that works. Okay, we'll go to 21B, this is resolution 2025-35 relative to acceptance of an award in the amount of $87,000 from the Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program for the purchase of SWAT SOU equipment for the Laconia Police Department. Is there somebody to speak on that?
Uh, no, there's no one here, but this is, when I talked to PD, this is primarily safety equipment, helmets, the vests, the plates, that type of stuff, it's more of the safety equipment. They, they have a shelf life, whether they're used or not. And so, this is a grant to replace the majority of that equipment. I can get you the exact breakdown for the next meeting if you, if you'd like. It's a, it's a grant through Homeland Security. And I believe there's, yeah, there's no, there's no match on our part.
No cap, no cost to the taxpayers of Laconia. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll move to waive a reading of resolution 2025-35 in its entirety and read by title only. Look for a motion on that, motion by councillor Felch, seconded by councillor Bogart. All in favor? Six zip, thank you. Now, I'll move a first reading of the resolution 2025-35 relative to acceptance of an award in the amount of $87,000 from the Department of Homeland Security Grant Program for the purchase of SWAT SOU equipment for the Laconia Police Department. Look for a motion on that. Councillor Susi, and seconded by councillor. You had me going on that one, it's your fault. Any discussion? All in favor? That's six zip, thank you very much, boy. Okay, I'll move to schedule a public hearing on December 8th, 2025 during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for a motion on that. Move by councillor Haynes, seconded by councillor Felch, all in favor? That's six zip, thank you all, very much, you too councillor Hoffman. Okay, now we go to 21C, this is resolution 2025-36 request to use impact fee funds to replace a damaged garage door motor and provide maintenance on the remaining motors at the Laconia, at the Fire Department Central Station.
Yeah, I, if you'd like, I have Chief Trubert up here for both these next two items, if you'd like to hear from him.
Sure, come on up, he's here.
I made him come out at night, so it'd be nice to.
Maybe you can explain how, what happened to the motor?
I will do my best, good evening, everyone. So, the motors now are 10 years old, and we have those beautiful garage doors, those bifold doors. Unfortunately, to our surprise, one started leaking oil, and we started to go down a rabbit hole. We found that those motors are no longer manufactured or supported, or nobody really works on them. The warranty were off, and the people that installed them were, were hands off now, we, we don't want to touch them. So, we were panicking, we worked with our local door company to kind of try to repair it the best as we possibly could, and it worked for around six months, and then it started leaking oil again. And then, another motor started leaking oil, and primarily, it's the most used door opener, so it's the ambulance, which is opening and closing all day long. And then, the first two engine out is central. So, we researched all the different opportunities and options, and the only thing that we can really do is buy new motors for those doors. So, this is to, a request to replace the most damaged motor, which is the ambulance, and rotate the other motors based on use, so we can prolong their life.
I just have a question. The people that wiped their hands and said, we're not going to repair these, those are the people that you bought them from?
So, I don't really know if we bought them from them, or if it was a third party that installed them.
It was a third party that installed them.
Okay, they, so they don't sell them too?
They were bought from, I don't remember the state, it was out west. And installed by a local company, and, and, and maintenance was done throughout the years, you know, preventative maintenance. If there was any damages or, or problems with them, they, they came in to fix. But obviously, as the chief's saying, they've just gotten to a point, this particular, one or two in particular, have just gotten to a point where the, the repairs and the general maintenance are just beyond what they can do.
Any other questions? Councillor Cheney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am the liaison to fire, and the chief and I have discussed this. My understanding is the repair of the, the worst doors, 11,000?
So, that, that total cost is for the replacement of the worst motor, which is the ambulance bay motor. And then, it's kind of swapping out the motors based on usage, so we can prolong their lives. So, the, the cost of the actual motor is like $7,600.
Okay, you and I talked about 11,000 the other day, what was the additional?
So, the cost of the motor was the 7,600, and the rest was the maintenance to, to remove and replace the other motors based on usage.
So, we're, we're looking at 11,000 for the one door. My recollection is the motor for a second door would cost us 7,000.
It would be the, like, $7,600.
I personally would like to recommend we consider taking care of both of those. Those doors are pretty important to the rest of us, and they're at least 10 years old. Maybe a little.
2014, 15, depending on when they were manufactured.
Would it save money to do them both at once?
Obviously, at some point in time, we're going to have to replace the, the second motor that, that's leaking. Problem that we're going to run into with my impact fees is I only have so many impact fees, so that would be the challenge.
But again, would it save money to replace them both at, at once, to do all the work at one time? I, I just.
It would be, it would be more expensive, the, the total cost for it, in the long run, it probably would save the department and the, and the city money to replace both of them.
That's what I was thinking, maybe. Councillor Cheney?
Well, I just, I, I saw, if they're installing it, and the one next to it needs to be installed, if they're there, they're not going to charge us as much for installation cost, et cetera. So, I recommend that we approve both doors. Some of that money should come from the, the fund, but I think the council should authorize the additional monies. I would ask the manager if he thinks he could find the difference to get both done.
Councillor Susi?
About approximately $7,000.
Yeah, we can take, so what I would do is, in the one that you have today, the reason this is like is, is, is because the next agenda item is requesting more impact fee money, and it's going to actually, we have a plan, we know that there's not enough money in the impact fees to handle the next thing, but we know where it's coming from within the budget. So, if you go through this, to do your public hearing, you can also make the recommendation as the motion that I come back with a funding source for a complete replace of both motors.
Right.
And we can, that way, the resolution that's, we, we can make that adjustment.
I, I just, I just know that now companies charge you, as soon as, it seems like as soon as they get out of bed, and, you know, when they drive to the location or something, it just seems like all these hidden costs come up, and that's so hidden somewhere.
I just had my refrigerator fixed. Guy came out and charged me $147 to tell me he was coming back to fix it.
Okay, councillor Bogart?
How many motors are there?
Of that style, excuse me, one, two, three, five?
Five of that style? So, we can probably anticipate in the future, if we replace two, there's going to be three more on the list at some point in time.
At, at some point, obviously, there's certain doors that get used a lot more than others. And I think by having that company rearrange where those motors are located will prolong their lives. But yes, I would say at some point in time, that's the reality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, the only thing we would be looking at is the additional cost of a second motor. Because the labor to move the others around would be the same labor as to put a new in.
It's not going to be a total 7,600 for the side, once you start doing the math, though. We'd have to get that exact number, but I was thinking the same thing, it's, there's going to be a difference somewhere, maybe 3,000 or 4,000, so, as opposed to the full 7,600, yep.
And the other thing to think about too is those new motors will have warranties on them.
And do we have, you've selected a very good motor?
It's the only motor that'll work for those style doors, so yes, I've selected the only motor. They're out of Manchester.
I'm sure the fire chief does whatever's best for the fire department, which is the best for the city, so, yep. Any other questions?
So, what I would recommend is as you go through your motions, your first one's going to be your standard motion, the second one's going to be what you have written. And then, I would also just add an addendum to that.
To the second one?
To the second motion, that you're identifying, that you're requesting, I identify funding source for replacing the second motor as well. And cost, identifying the source and total price for replacing the second motor. Does that make sense, Katie, for your typing?
Are we on the second motion, or are we on the first motion?
First. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to put it, it'll be in this, I'm going to incorporate it right into that second motion. Okay, any last shot, anybody? Okay, so I'm going to move to waive a reading of resolution 2025-36 in its entirety and read by title only. Look for a motion. Motion by councillor Felch, seconded by councillor Cheney. All in favor? That's six to nothing, thank you. Now, I'm going to move a first reading of resolution 2025-36 request to use impact fee funds to replace a damaged garage door motor and provide maintenance on the remaining motors at the Fire Department Central Station, and also request the city manager for funding source for the cost and replacement of the second motor.
Yep, that works.
Motion by councillor Cheney, seconded by councillor Felch. All in favor? That's six zip, thank you very much. And now, I move to schedule a public hearing on December 8th, 2025 during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for, we've got a motion by councillor Haynes, seconded by councillor Hoffman, all in favor, please raise your hands. That's six to nothing, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go. This is 21D, this is resolution 2025-37 request to use impact fees and internal service funds to purchase a used ambulance for the Laconia Fire Department. Chief, used, from where?
All great questions. So, we have purchased two new ambulances that are in production. Unfortunately, their production delivery dates are delayed, and we're kind of at the mercy of the manufacturers and the dealerships, dealerships, excuse me. And it's something that the fire service in general is trying to figure out and deal with. It's been very, very challenging. We were hoping that our current fleet of ambulances would last until their delivery, but that's probably not a reality for us. We have one that is, that goes out of service at least once, once a week. Two out of the three have aged out, and they're experiencing constant issues. So, as a possible solution to make sure and ensure that we have proper ambulance, ambulance coverage, I'm bringing this before the body, the ambulance that we're looking at is from a, a department up north that does very minimal calls, the ambulance has 40,000 miles on it. It comes with the radios, the lights, the radio, or the stretcher in the back and a load system. So, it pretty much is plug and play. That stretcher and load system by itself is valued at around $30,000. The only thing we have to do is swap the numbers on the ambulance, and, and we'll be operational at that point in time. My biggest fear is that we're going to have a catastrophic failure in one of those ambulances, and the city needs to have three ambulances in service at all times.
Excuse me, you'll be able to keep that used one for future dates, right?
Correct.
No plans to sell it, lay it down the road?
No, what I, what I would like to do operationally is take the one that I'm most concerned about and set it aside for emergency purposes only, if anything else has an issue, and then run three, I guess, most ready ambulances to emergency incidents.
Any questions, councillor Cheney?
I would remind the council that the new ambulances combined are going to cost us close to $1 million, so.
50, did you say?
55. Not to exceed 55,000, correct?
55,000 seems like a real bargain to me.
It does.
Particularly on a vehicle that has 40,000 miles on it. How many miles on your oldest ambulance?
A lot, I don't know off the top of my head, but yes.
I would remind everybody, we bought a used ambulance from, from Franklin just a couple of years ago to try and help us get over this time problem, which has nothing to do with the fire department. It has to do with a contractor building the new ambulances. So, I want to strongly support and recommend to the balance of the council that we spend this 54,000 or whatever to get this new ambulance, new to us ambulance. Recognizing we already have one used, one in the fleet, and we have some old ones. I went up to the Weers one time, and the rear bumper moved up and down. I, I know they fixed it, but it, they're getting old, and I just think this is, you know, a stopgap measure, but I think that he's done a brilliant job to find this, this piece of iron, thank you.
Councillor Susi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say to the city manager, because I see you've outlined where the money's going to come from, and that the internal service fund is going to pick up the balance.
Going to pick up the balance, but I don't want to get into the habit of replacing vehicles mid-year. So, as the chief and I have talked about, he's going to pay with whatever he can out of impact fees, once that. We'll pick up the difference in the internal service fund, but his impact fees moving forward are going to replenish what he, what he took out of that. It's not really just take out of it, it's a, it, it, the internal service fund, each department who, that uses vehicles pays some money into. That's what repairs and replacement of equipment. DBW, fire and police are your biggest by far, but anybody who, if your planning department has a car, so they pay a little bit into internal service fund. And that's factored into how much we're going to pay into it during the course of the year. So, obviously, this is giving the fire department a little bit extra to take care of it. So, I asked the chief that, with the expectation that any money that comes out of internal service fund gets replenished through upcoming impact fee assessments that he receives.
The ambulance that you're going to hold on to, let's say for, it's good to have it for spare parts if something's needed, right? But that's not resalable somewhere in the market?
I, I wouldn't think so, no, it's in pretty bad shape.
Somebody, I just, the reason I'm bringing the question up is somebody might ask the question, that's why I was.
Sure, it's, it's actually slated to be traded, that's what was part of the contract with the new ambulances, so.
So, what happens now, then?
They still take it the way it is.
They'll take it the way it is.
Yes.
And we ought to keep it running just like it is.
I just want to make two comments, it just, I know. It just, I know chief mentioned this, but ambulances, once upon a time, were six months. Hundred and eighty days, start to finish, from the day you sign the paperwork to the day it's in your door. This council wasn't the council that approved those two ambulances, it was actually two years ago, or more. We're, we're close to like two and a half years ago now that it was ordered. Ambulances are, you're looking at about three years. Fire trucks are hitting the four and five-year mark from the day they're ordered. It's, it's unbelievable. So, you know, again, this isn't something that we certainly don't choose to, chief and I, I want to say debated. We went back and forth on the merits of doing this, and being able to do this outweighed waiting.
One more.
Counselor Soucy?
Are you pretty sure we can get this, and somebody else is not going to beat you to the punch?
We have a handshake agreement if, if it goes through, yes.
Thank you.
I love handshake agreements. Anybody else?
I, I just want to say, if, once we finally get the other two ambulances, it'll be nice to have a spare in case something does happen. I mean, we, we do need three ambulances, and we're growing, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to move to waive a reading of Resolution 2025-37 in its entirety and read by title only. Look for a motion on that. Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. All in favor? That's six in the, Counselor Soucy, did you want to vote on that? Did you vote on that? Okay, six, zero. Thank you very much. I'm going to move a first reading of Resolution 2025-37 relative to the request of use, to use impact fees and internal service funds to purchase a used ambulance for the Laconia Fire Department. For motion, Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Hayes. All in favor? Six in the affirmative, thank you all. And lastly, I move to schedule a public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty-five during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. For motion on that, Counselor Hayes, seconded by Counselor Bogart. All in favor? Six, nothing, thank you all for that. Thank you again, Chief. Okay, now we're at twenty-one B. This is a twenty-two-five second half sewer warrant.
Yep, it's myself for Katie. This is the sewer warrant for the non, those who aren't on water. So that's what this is, and Katie.
What he said, no. So, I have, I have a copy of the warrant. It, it itemizes out everyone that's being assessed. It is people that receive just sewer only and have private water. It's for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. The rates go up annually in the spring, that was set by the council a few years ago, and they're going to go out when the tax bills go out.
And if anybody wants to see a copy of that, they can come down to City Hall.
Yeah.
Excellent. What transparency, beautiful. Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, and we will. I don't think, is there a motion on that?
Yes.
There is.
Yeah, there's a motion at the bottom to approve.
Oh, where is it? It's so small. Okay, I move to approve the twenty, thank you, Kirk. I move to approve the twenty-two-five second half sewer warrant as presented. That motion's been made by Counselor Bogart, seconded by Counselor Felch. All in favor? Thank you, that's six, nothing for that. Okay, now we are. On unfinished business, twenty-two A. This is Resolution 2025-38, request to expend funds from the downtown TIF for conceptual design and cost estimate for lighting.
So this was the one that was on your agenda last meeting that I asked you to table, because we didn't have a resolution attached to it, so I, so I wanted to bring it up now. This is, we have a, a, um, a, a plan in place, a study in place to do lighting in the down, the city hall parking lot, the small parking lot, and out back here. It's been asked to expand it down to Rotary Park to add lighting down there. We're looking for additional TIF money to, to pay for that. It's about a six thousand dollar upgrade to what we're doing, though, and they have to go back and update the numbers. It's been a couple of years. So they'll, they'll update the total cost for up here and add in down there as well. And if, if you choose to do that, we'll get this back to you with the, with an ability to, to get a, to get a true number for how much it's going to cost. If you want to discuss it, you'll notice the first thing is to take it off the table.
Yeah, I see that, okay. Let's, I want to move to take this agenda off the table, this gender item off the table. Look for a motion, that's motioned by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Bogart. All in favor? Okay, six, nothing, thank you. Okay, discussion, anybody?
I just want to say, I think this is a great idea. We spoke about it at the TIF meeting last month. We have another meeting Wednesday, so I'm sure we'll discuss it again, but I think it's a great idea.
So for the public that hasn't read the TIF meeting, TIF meeting minutes, or has talked to any counselors about that, will this improve the lighting, as in it'll light it up more at night, or?
Yeah, so this came up a couple of, well, it's been a couple of years now, but this came up about how do we get more lighting downtown? Especially, you know, the parking lot out here, even though it's used primarily for city hall parking and some of the businesses downtown, a lot of the businesses are used at night. And when you start, as much as I hate to say this, at four-thirty in the afternoon, when it becomes dark out, you know, there's not great lighting. There is lighting, but it's not great. It also doesn't include some of the Riverwalk that we have out back here that you could walk at night, and then down into Rotary Park as well. So we've been talking about this for a couple of years, how do we make the lighting better? We know it's not going to be inexpensive to do, but we also know that we need to have a really good engineered study done to be able to tell us exactly how that lighting needs to be, and that's what we're hoping to be able to move forward with here.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure it'll be LED lighting, so it's going to be less expensive to operate.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bogart?
And if my memory serves me. If my memory serves me, these lights are going to be like the ones we have downtown, so they're matching up.
Yeah, we talked about that, yeah.
They're not going to be these ugly looking things.
Yeah, we talked about that, to try to match it to the downtown, so it, it looks like it flows in, you know, aesthetically nice, yep.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll move to waive a reading of Resolution 2025-38 in its entirety and to read by title only. Move by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, that's, okay, there we go. Six in the affirmative, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move the first reading of Resolution 2025-38, request to expend funds from the downtown TIF for conceptual design and cost estimate for lighting. Motion, move by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Bogart. All in favor? That's six to nothing, thank you. And so now I'll move to schedule a public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty-five during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for a motion on that. Counselor Hoffman, seconded by Counselor Cheney. All in favor? Raise your hands. Thank you, that's six, nothing. Thank you all. And twenty-two B. This is Resolution 2025-31, a resolution relative to authorize and acceptance of a New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of fifty-five thousand to fund the Laconia Police Department's utility side-by-side vehicle project.
If you, if you'd like, this was, so this was, if you remember, this came before you just a couple of weeks ago. We were furnished with incorrect numbers. So the resolution that you had was for fifty-one thousand, acceptance of this grant. The, the actual number's fifty-five thousand. So to do this correctly, we need you to do a, a, basically like the, that last resolution never came forward, and we'll do a public hearing and, and grant acceptance as, as we normally would do. It's the cleanest and, you know, most correct way to do it.
Counselor Cheney?
I just want to remind the council that we authorized them to, to buy the vehicle, and they went out and found grant money to pay for it, which I think we should all be thankful for.
Right.
He, he's done a great job of getting grants, and I think we need to get him to teach our other.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Counselor Bogart?
Remind me, was that for one vehicle or two? I thought it was two. Two side-by-side.
He believes he's going to be able to do two vehicles for that price.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I'm going to move to waive a reading of Resolution 2025-31 as amended in its entirety and to read by title only. Move by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Felch. Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. That's six in the affirmative, thank you. And now I want to move a first reading of Resolution 2025-31 as amended relative to authorize and acceptance of a New Hampshire Department of Safety twenty-two-five Homeland Security Competitive Grant in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars to fund the Laconia Police Department's utility side-by-side vehicle project. Motion made by Counselor Soucy, seconded by Counselor Hayes. Discussion, all in favor? That's six, nothing in the affirmative, thank you. And lastly, I move to schedule a public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty-five during a regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to any action being taken. Look for motion on that. Counselor Hayes, seconded by Counselor Soucy. All in favor, raise your hands. That's six in the affirmative, thank you very much. Because I hear, I hear rustling.
We saved the last thing to go, so they know they can back up as well.
Even the city manager is rustling.
The last one's usually not the most controversial.
This reminds me, this reminds me being in a classroom. All right, all right, all right. Well, that, we'll take a motion to end the council meeting tonight. Motion by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Felch. All in favor?